All right, I will call to order the regular town council meeting of September 10th, 2024. We will start with a pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence, so if you can stand, do so.
Can you start to fasten your moments of silence, start tomorrow night?
Yeah, sure, let's do that. Good, thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is proclamations and presentations, and we do have a special proclamation tonight. We are, do you want to give this to Kathy Barnes? So I'm gonna read it and then we'll take pictures if you want. Hopefully, maybe you'll even want to say hi to your dog. That's the fun part, like, of course. So, whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and inclusivity of all citizens.
Yeah, it looks like he got bounced, or at least it looks like he got bounced off.
We'll just stand at ease for a second.
Brian, can you record? And I'll come and get up the stick.
Sure.
I'm not sure what's wrong.
Show me where to record, as I've never done that before.
Um.
There you go.
Record to this computer.
You know how to get it off of this computer?
Uh huh, yeah. Sorry about that.
It'll be on our Zoom account.
Recording in progress.
We'll start over. Whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and inclusivity of all citizens, whereas in the United States, sixty-four million adults and children have a disability and only sixteen thousand service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing. Whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships. Whereas Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and a deeply committed community of support. Whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. Whereas the Town of Tolland continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their service dogs earn grades. Whereas the Town of Tolland encourages all citizens to celebrate service dogs and to be respectful of the rights afforded to the adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of their assistance. Now, therefore, in recognition of service dogs and the adults and children with disabilities in our community, I, Katie Stargardt, Chair of the Tolland Town Council, do hereby proclaim September to be National Service Dog Month, dated at Tolland, Connecticut, is tenth day of September, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to introduce Dee Rendock and future service dog Canine Companions puppy in the program, Yolanda. She is five months old. And I'll turn this over to Dee if we could have a minute.
Yes, please.
I see hands.
So she's five months old. Actually, Canine Companions is an organization of, made up of volunteers, to raise these young puppies from eight weeks until about seventeen, eighteen months. So she's my third puppy. My second one is currently in advanced training where they are usually for about six months. Their goal is to be able to serve as individuals with handicaps, both adults and children. They've also been placed with, even here, local police departments, including their con, quiet, sins very, they've also been in courthouses, schools. So she's five months old. She is a full black lab. In August, our organization, Canine Companions, actually had eight thousand puppies total since the beginning.
That's wonderful. Yeah, I raised four. Two are currently working. One is enrichment with a now thirteen-year-old child who has autoimmune and other disabilities. Her mother contacts me regularly and says, no, that makes a difference. My second one is Wally, and she is working at Good Shepherd Pen Partners Hospital in Philadelphia with a recreation therapist and specializing in people with traumatic brain injuries. And so when you ask, how can you give them up, those two are half. It's wonderful.
Well, Yadi, can we say hi? Pardon me? Will we overwhelm her? Will you bring her around? Will we come out too?
The tail goes though, the tail goes. I have so much trouble with that when I get home, sweetie.
We have until about nine months before they can clear the coffee table.
With that tail, with that tail.
I've already sent her.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and if you want to do a picture, we can, we would love that.
All right.
Do, you want to do it behind the seal? You want to do that?
Behind the seal is probably decent, right?
By the seal, yeah.
Wait, they're gonna be able to see the dog.
Oh, Alex, sorry, you missed the dog. Go ahead, Alex.
I just wanted to say, of course, the one of the few nights that I'm not there, you guys have a frickin' puppy in there, but yeah, go have, have fun. Have fun. Brought me in, brought me in.
Trying to get Alex's picture.
Oh, Alex.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for sharing your story and your. Hi, sweetie. You forgot. Enjoy.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. That was really fun. We will move on to item five on our agenda, which is public petitions, communications, and public participation. This is on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If you're online and you'd like to participate, you can raise your Zoom hand. If you're in the room and you're able, we'd ask you to come up to the table. Either way, we are asking you to give your name and your address for the record. So is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak? Anyone on Zoom? Last chance, are you in the room? Do? All right, we will move on to item six, which is public hearing items, of which we have none. Item seven A is reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Our call, firehouse.
Our fact has not met yet. We will later this month, and then firehouse gives, has a pretty big update, you know what?
Dee, we want to go.
Oh, go ahead.
So, success last week. We got a complete CO for the fire station. One of the fire trucks went in, make sure they fit, and I'm thinking, why are we checking now? One of my first questions when I saw. Probably passed out. But anyway, so that's probably the biggest update. We meet next week to talk about small things like locks beneath the station, but they're so expensive, leaving not for like ten thousand dollars to install locks, and Megan's been going crazy trying to find good quotes so we can do that. Again, I don't know how they did it, but we were waiting on, I talked about it immediately, and those windows, the placement on the base, contract had messed up again. We have to wait another two weeks to get windows, so I don't know if they need a new measuring tee or something. And then I think that's it again. We're planning the open house, I think, October twenty-sixth, unless the committee decides they want to move it up, since it seems like we're gonna be earlier than we thought it'd be weeks ago.
Road salt task force has a meeting on Monday, the twenty-third, when we expect kind of an update for some of the ongoing efforts that have been going on. All right, we will move on then to reports of town council liaisons. Councilor Nune, do you want to start?
I have nothing.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want to cram Chris's style. Well, land acquisition?
Yeah.
We had a land acquisition meeting. It was gigantic. There was three of us on the call. Um, we approved the surveying, correct?
Yes.
Your buddy with their surveying.
Was it easement or something?
Yes, yes. I'm gonna kind of explain it.
To access the marsh or whatever.
Yes, so there, there, we intend on buying the marsh. In order to do that, we have to do some surveying, and there's gonna be some easements involved that allow us, the town, to have access to trails on existing properties. There's a cost to that. I don't know what it was, but we approved to do it. What was it, you know? The whole thing, usually in under ten thousand.
Yeah.
I think we're.
Ten or fifteen, but it comes out of the land acquisition advisory butt.
Correct.
So it doesn't come out of the dedicated fund set aside for that.
As necessary was what's to be expected for the cost.
Yep.
It was a necessary step.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all I have. Councilor Shay?
Nothing to report for me, yes.
Councilor Mark?
So the economic development commission did meet last week. I do have a couple of updates from them. So, one of their members did step down. Their career has just been, you know, kind of had to take a decision, so they weren't able to continue working. So there is a open, full-time spot on the EDC, if you know anyone who's interested. Additionally, the, there's a possibility that we'll have a car wash in town across from Big Y. The owner of that potential business did attend the meeting to ask about potential tax abatements. So there was a discussion about that. No decision or recommendation came out of that. That individual's gonna come back with a more detailed business plan, which is what the EDC wanted to see. I'm related to that conversation, kind of in parallel with that. I've been kind of working together with them upon potential changes we might want to propose to our tax abatement ordinance. So I had met with them upon this topic back in August, and we had a good discussion, and we continued to discuss that at the September meeting about ways we can firm up the policy so there's a bit more of a strategy, and also make sure that we're asking for the right information from owners to come forward with the tax abatement so that we don't end up getting burned, which is just as important as tracking business. We don't want to grant tax breaks to properties and have it be vacant a year later. So really good conversation with that. I think we're gonna continue firming that up in October, and hopefully we'll eventually see that recommendation brought to council, but overall, very good meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the Recreation Advisory Board met Monday. Just really quick update. Preschool started. Bruce was able to hire Director of the Crew Program. They also started the Food Explorers Program Two, and Department's gonna offer basically a flash sale for summer camp next summer because he has to use that ARPA money before a certain time by the end of the year. And whatever he doesn't use, he has to return back to ARPA. We'd rather see that sooner than later so we can allocate what's left, but I think it's a great idea. So people with kids that need summer camp, keep an eye out because that's a big opportunity to sign up early. And then talked about the harvest festivals. Just gonna say it later, but Peter, Tricia, and myself were able to get out seventy pre reminders of signup for the Scarecrow over the weekend, people that have used, you know, done it the last two years, so it's really great. And we discussed already capital improvement projects. But that's really all I have. And now, Katie.
Okay, thank you.
I had planning in zoning last night to, there was relatively quick meeting to, two things. They had a continuation of the public hearing for their affordable housing plan update. Their prior meeting was very long. They had two items up for public hearing, so they ultimately approved their affordable housing plan update. I know that was a lot of work for PZC and David and their whole team, so they put a lot of effort into that, so I think they did a great job there. And then they just approved the signed permit for six seventy Palm Stage Road. I think it's a liquor store. And that was about it.
The Stark District Commission meets later this month. Can't remember if it's next Wednesday or the Wednesday after, but it's coming up. Yes, the eighteenth, next Wednesday. All right, we'll move on to item eight, which is new business. And in spirit of having dog visitors, we have eight point one, the introduction of the new therapy dog house.
Great, thank you, Chair. So on here. Here it is. So it's in your packet. We've learned that we had that there was a canine named Lincoln that belongs to Jillian, who was in our Human Services. That was a service dog, and so we wanted to formalize a policy. That policy is in front of you for us to have a service dog. Jillian and Lincoln come on up to the table if you want. She can tell you more about what she does in the program. But, you know, we've, we've had a, please read the, the policy when you have a moment. It's very thought out, clear through our town attorney as well. And it basically goes through liability is really the big thing with them, and, you know, gives the director and the town manager some power to discontinue said program if there's a problem. And, but Jillian is, works in our Human Services Department. Go ahead, Jillian.
Thank you. So this is Lincoln. He's almost two. He'll be two in November. He's a Sam Bootle. He got certified back in March, April, if I remember correctly. So the certification process, we went through the New England Human Animal Bond Foundation. He smells something good down there. So we went through the New England Human Animal Bonds Foundation, and that's one of the many therapy dog programs in the state. And it was a ten-week-long program. Prior to this, he had to be a year and a half, like that age, to, at the earliest, to start. And he went through two rounds of family dog obedience training as well. I got him when he was nine months old, so he was a little bit older. So I haven't had him since a puppy, but I've had him just over a year now. And so I got him with the intention of, yes, I wanted a pet, but also with my line of work that I thought having a therapy dog would be very useful in my career. My parents actually have a therapy dog as well and went through the same training, and I saw it and thought when I got him, I would see if he would do well with it, and he absolutely thrived through the whole program. So prior to his completion, he did come into the office a couple of times to get the lay of the land and to be comfortable in the area because it's very important for the dogs to see the space before they actually work in it. So he got comfortable sitting in my office and walking through the building, the elevators, the stairs, because there are many different kinds of textures on the floor here, so it's good for them to learn all of that. And then from here, since getting the policy approved, he has, he comes in two days a week with me, so usually Tuesdays and Thursdays, and he comes in to meet with my clients, so he is in my office. He's in the department too. He sometimes wanders into another room in the department with the assistant director and director. They all like him very much, thankfully. And so he sits with the clients. If the clients aren't as big of a fan of him, if they are afraid of dogs, then he goes in with Teresa, the assistant director. That isn't the case too often, but if they just want him there, then he sits off to the side. If they want him right next to him, he usually can pick up on that, and he sits right next to them. He'll put his head in their lap or a hand on their knee. He likes doing that a lot. He is a pretty docile dog, and so the idea is that he provides a lot of comfort because people who come into our office are usually, unfortunately, in a state of crisis in some manner. So having that comfort and having that bit of therapy that we can't provide as humans is really helpful to them. He also has a monthly standing appointment at Winding River Village with the elderly residents over there, and they absolutely love him. So he's actually going next Wednesday to them, and they sit with him for about thirty minutes and just love him up. I talk about the new programs going on in the town, so it's a nice, consistent way for me to talk to them over there. I also break him when I go to Winding River and Old Post Village for renters rebate applications and fuel assistance applications. And on average, he sees about ten clients with me a week. On a normal week, we're getting into fuel season, so he'll probably see more like twenty clients a week as we pick up applications. But, yeah, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer anything about them and about what we do in the office.
Great haircut.
He just got groomed yesterday. I was so happy because that's planned like weeks in advance, and if not, I was gonna give him a bath, but his hair was about as crazy.
I'll let you go. I have a comment, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry if I missed it. Did you say you would also be bringing him to the schools at all, or? Yes, so that was part of what we talked about the last town council meeting. So he's part of the pause-up for prevention initiative that we're trying to push forward. So part of that community education engagement plan, which we're gonna condense that title, is working in the schools and having him kind of as the mascot. The kids respond really well to him. He's already gone into the high school multiple times. He was in the high school for National Prevention Week back in May, and we did tabling there, and that was on our mental health day. So all week long, we did a different day focusing on a different section of prevention, and so for the mental health day, he was there. And then he also went to the orientation for them, but we are, we just had a conversation with Walt this morning about getting him into the schools more for this coming school year.
It's great, I guess. That's just one other question. Is there any concerns with people that might have allergies or are very fearful, or?
So because he's a Sam Bootle, he's separate. Had the allergy done, he doesn't shed. So people who have hypersensitivities to possibly the oils in the skin, that would be the only concern, but we would make sure that for the younger kids, especially that the parents are aware he would be coming in. And if someone, just like with my clients, if they do not want to interact with him, he is told to go into the corner, and he sits off to the side very calmly.
Definitely say yes to it. Great, thank you.
All right, so I should do that question. Is there, I think the policy is good. But I was just wondering, Brian, is there any action required from the council we need to vote on this?
No.
Or awareness?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of. No, it's just, this is just, we're breaking the new policy.
Okay, good. And then, yeah, I think for dogs headed in council meeting, that's great. And then you, yeah, the other dog.
The dog record.
Average dogs for meetings.
Right.
But I also just wanted to thank you for, you know, going through the effort of being certified as a therapy dog. I think that's great. Didn't have to do that, but it's a great, very good house the town has.
Yeah, I'm very thankful that the town has been so accommodating with it because it's nice to have them with me a couple of days a week as well. So I'm very glad that it all worked out.
Absolutely.
I just want to say, I think it's fantastic. Thank you for doing this. Thank you for going and treating with the dog. Also, if you guys have any availability during budget season, if you want to. That was Brian, my suggestion.
Yeah, that's what I do here. If you close the doors, they'll just wander around.
Eva, you're done, yeah. Thank you for sharing, and we asked you to bring it. It's wonderful, I see. So thank you so much for sharing him and kind of expanding what you guys are offering in Human Services, I think. You think it's pretty cool, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jillian. Good job.
All right.
He worked today.
Oh.
Do you want to go home?
Yeah. Item eight point two on our agenda is the consideration of the proposed ordinance that came from states after change this year.
Thank you. So Public Act twenty-four dash sixteen is an act. The chief Laitel is here to talk about it. An act that basically allows police chiefs, fire chiefs, and emergency personnel, EMS, so first responders, chiefs, to declare if the first responder dies, include, to include volunteers in the line of duty to declare in the line of duty death, to include heart attacks, strokes, pulmonary within twenty-four hours of their last shift. This, this public act has an amendment or, I'm sorry, you know, there's a, there's a line in the, in the public act that says this will be in effect in all towns unless the local charter ordinance is in effect by October first, twenty twenty-four, authorizing a different person or entity to make the determination. Talking it over with different stakeholders to include the chief, our town attorney, and our human resources director. We felt that it was best to get a, get, get this on the books before October first, to have a three-person commission to make those decisions, so it doesn't just fall on the fire chief. But currently, if, if there were to be a line of duty death as it stands right now, and if we were to enact this without having the commission and just fall on the fire chief's shoulders, there really is not a cost to the town at all. However, the reason I feel it's important, and Mike Wilkinson does as well, is union contracts change. Things change down the road, and so we'd like to have this, a three-person commission to make the decisions. And, you know, there's a lot of pressure in, in those times, be it on a police chief, fire chief, or an EMS chief, to call it in the line of duty death, to label that. And we understand that this is mainly for, say, scholarships, you know, tunnels to, what's the name of the organization? You, you have to, in order to get those benefits, you have to have the death declared in the line of duty death. So this ordinance here, we're asking that we, that we have a three-person, that's, that includes the fire chief, the human resources director, and myself, after, God forbid, a line of duty death, to make that determination. Any questions?
So, just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So the state law changed to include other events that you wouldn't have necessarily included in, on duty death, or, so it's including all these other medical things? So the net is wider as far as what were considered in the line of duty. And then what we're doing is we're creating an ordinance to authorize this commission to approve within, within twenty-four hours. Is that correct?
No, it's, so you're right, it extends the, the medical stuff, but it also extends the time period, you know, beyond, you know, it didn't happen while they were at the scene of a fire, you know, a police officer shot. It happens twenty-four hours later at home or what have you, that you could still call it a line of duty death and make that determination. There's no defined timeline as to when you want to do that, and certainly you don't want to rush to do that. You want to look at autopsies, chief medical examiner reports, evidence, and any, and all the factors in the death investigation to that. So no defined timeline on that. The timeline is only based on how close to the last shift the death occurred.
So it's just the, so it's mainly just the cause of death. There's, there's more that are included now?
Yep.
And they would be eligible for more benefits or additional benefits?
Yes, but it no expense to the town, so it has nothing to do with workman's comp. You can see they, they cut out the workman's comp part of it. So at this point, no expense to the town. However, there could be expenses built into contracts down the road. And so we just, this is more of a, of, of in case something happens down the road, in union context change, union contracts change, it'd be just a layer of protection. God forbid something like that ever happened. Uh God forbid something like that ever happened.
So you would have the authority, uh Chief Lotte will have the authority, Human Resources Director has the authority. Do you have to make this decision together or each individually, we would have the authority to make that call?
No, to- together, but the three of, the majority of the three. So two of the, three of the three or two of the three.
And just to clarify, the only thing we're being asked to do, the, the widening of the, of the net in the twenty-four hours, that's provided for under state law. We're just. Making the, the, the addition of the commission, that's.
Yep, okay, to determine.
Okay, thanks.
The proposed ordinance mentions a medical advisor if the town has one. Does the town have a medical advisor?
Eastern Islands Health District, and we would seek their opinion is how we.
Is that the same as like a coroner or is that?
No, no, there are, there are, there are health districts, so.
Okay.
But, but we would also, uh we'd get, obviously, if we could, although sometimes we don't get the autopsy report. Um only the family has entitlement. They would likely provide it if they were trying to get that.
Okay.
Thanks.
So what we're being asked to consider tonight is uh. To set a public hearing, because this would be in ordinance. In our town code, so we're being asked to set a public hearing uh for two weeks from tonight. At our regular town council meetings, um and we would uh have that public hearing, allow for the public. To make any comments, ask any questions. Um and then that evening, if we so choose. Uh we could vote on the ordinance, um if that is the will of the town, so.
I think I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
You keep talking if you have more, because I'm looking for, I copied and pasted it in here. I just had a question. I can't find it in here, so I apologize. It was, it was more of a question, so I don't know if it was actually verified in here. It was. Said, we don't believe our general insurance has any such benefit for this specific circumstance. So we don't believe is kind of like, we're not sure, so I don't know. There's more clarification.
There's a lot of variables uh in a death, um but Mike, Mike reached out to the insurance company and we don't believe that there are any. Uh it's the best I can tell you in, in his research. But it's, it can be great.
That's concerning. It's great, though. So who gets that? So the three members make that decision on. If somebody gets a benefit, I guess? Am I overthinking it?
Yeah, I think you're overthinking it. The three person panel would determine whether it, the, the death was considered an undue death or not. And then the administrative things kind of come after.
Yeah.
Um but the determination of whether it's a on-duty death or not is what our ordinance would address.
Okay, I've read this like a hundred times and tried to understand. Um so and then, sorry, Katie, um. That was. I think that was the only real question of clarification. Unfortunate that we haven't had this in the past. It could have been something, I think the town and other towns should have had.
This is a new state law that was.
Oh, I understand, but I'm just saying it's too bad in general that. It was never up there. But I think. If the three of you guys are comfortable with each other on this committee and you have the medical person that will help decide, I think. Sounds appropriate.
Any other? Questions or comments? Is there a motion then to approve the? Or to approve the resolution, which is a consideration of a proposed ordinance establishing authority to declare that a firefighter, police officer. Or emergency medical service personnel died in the line of duty as defined by C G S seven dash thirteen E and setting a public hearing. On September twenty fourth, twenty twenty-four. Okay, so we'll go. Uh Council Noonan made the motion. Council Moran, are you okay seconding?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion, questions? Okay, we do need to do a roll call vote because we are private tonight. Counselor Noonan?
Aye.
Council Buckler?
Aye.
Council Shay?
Aye.
Council Murray?
Council Yulcha?
Council Maria?
Aye.
And also an aye, so that is unanimous. Thank you. So we will have a public hearing on this matter two weeks from tonight. Alright, uh the next item on our agenda has to do with a KERMA distribution, um agenda item eight point three.
Uh thank you, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Uh this is a consideration, uh where it's basically the town uh received nineteen thousand and change uh from KERMA. It's again, it's an equity distribution, so. KERMA is our town insurer, similar to how Echip is uh our town health insurer. Uh and uh they came, they came with about nineteen and change, so. Uh in order to place that money in different areas, we need uh town council's approval. Uh the split of the nineteen thousand is fifty-four percent, you know, to the B O E and forty-six percent to the town. Uh and that is based on the percentage of total premium paid by the town, uh or consistent with the total premium paid by the town. And the, the board of ed. It's not something that we get every year, uh so we can't really count on that money. Uh and so we, and you can see attached to, to your um package is a list of things, the amounts and things we've used them for. Uh in previous years, this would, uh we're asking the town to allow us to put eight thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty cents. Uh to the capital improvement fund for environmental or other testing projects, basically, um our, our well contamination. Account uh moving forward. The board of ed, it will get ten thousand and they would appropriate statistic-wide miscellaneous capital account to the board of education.
Any questions, governments on this?
When, um, why do we get the money? I know it doesn't come off every year, but what's the, how do, how do we get the money back?
Check.
Us. Thank you. What are the reasons that we get the money back?
Good answer. KERMA did well. Um they don't pay shareholders.
Okay.
They, they give that back to us and there's, KERMA is a. Larger conglomeration of towns than Echip across the state and other bigger towns get more of that share back. That was nineteen thousand.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Oh no, I actually do not.
And I um. I did reach out uh. To the board of education and they are discussing their potential distribution at their board of ed meeting tomorrow night. So um while we do not yet know how that money will be spent on the board of ed side, it is something they will be discussing tomorrow night. Is there a motion then to approve? The resolution for agenda item eight point three that's on page eight, uh sorry, sixteen of our packet?
Salute, as written.
Second by Council Buckler. Is there any further discussion? Uh so we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Noonan?
Aye.
Council Buckler?
Aye.
Council Shay?
Aye.
Council Murray?
Aye.
Council Yulcha?
Council Moran?
Aye.
I'm also an aye, so passes, thank you. Uh agenda item eight point four is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. Maria?
Yes, so we have one uh appointment to the Veterans Recognition Commission. Uh so this, Matt Kuhn has already been serving as an alternate on that mission, uh and we're seeking to move him to a full um regular member. You know, he's already been serving. I think it would be great for the Veterans Recognition Commission to have.
Any questions or comments on that? Is there a motion then to make the appointment as outlined in our packet, for Matt Kuhn?
Salute.
By Council Moran, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Shay, is there any further discussion? Maybe we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Noonan?
Aye.
Council Buckler?
Aye.
Council Shay?
Aye.
Council Murray?
Aye.
Council Yulcha?
Aye.
Council Moran?
Aye.
I'm also an aye, so that's, thank you. Alright, cruising along. Uh item nine on our agenda is old business, of which we have none. Item ten is report of the town manager.
Thank you so much. Uh let's start out with uh some uh internal, we, positions open. Obviously, we're hiring for our senior center director, two labor positions in D P W. Uh as well as our finance director. All of those um postings are going very well and we're getting a good. Uh solid pool of applicants for those, uh Mike Wilkinson running those out of human resources. Uh our town-sponsored bulky waste pickup is coming up, uh the week of October seventh. We will advertise that um thoroughly uh when that comes up. And again, it's, they don't automatically pick it up in front of your house. You have to call and notify them. Uh what you have and and then they'll come pick it up. Uh we also have a rec electronics recycling event coming on Saturday, October nineteenth, uh eight to twelve at the high school. Again, we will advertise uh that as needed as well. In regards to, in regards to ordinance sixty, a lot of talk, uh Chief Laitel has agreed to. Do a full-page ad in his Talon Fire Department phone book to help raise awareness for ordinance sixty. Uh that is our target audience, those who, who get that too, so that is uh fantastic. Certainly, I see it on my mom's counter every time I go over there. Uh the, our assessor, Jason Lawrence, has been doing a fantastic job with the crumbling foundations. Uh and working with the, the crumbling foundation solution indemny company. Uh in relation to that, there, there is a meeting that will be held at Ellington High School on September seventeenth at six P M. We will be advertising that uh heavily when that comes up. He already mentioned that we got the C O for station three forty, uh still much work to do there, but uh Megan's doing a good job staying on top of that. I don't know if Jillian mentioned or not, but she helped out with our freshman orientation at Talon High School. Her um and our assistant human services director. Uh we're over there, uh Van Lincoln, uh the dog as well, uh and it was great. Uh she'll be starting as our prevention specialist this week, um so that, that, very successful and happy that that went forward. Some other issues, um or good news, Herring Cove, the pickleball court is underway up there. They went, went and marked some trees out that, the contractor that uh needed to be cut, so that'll be. Uh moving forward uh this week and next week and should be a relatively quick project, knock on wood. Uh the library media center updates uh that, that we have are just about complete. One of the cameras is not functioning correctly. They are gonna send somebody, a new camera and somebody to fix it, so hopefully that'll be ready to go. And we are considering, again, as you mentioned last time, having a council meeting down there uh to show it off, uh hopefully, and it'll go well for our. Uh residents who are watching uh remotely. Elections are coming quickly. Uh we have discussions often about them. We have a confidence meeting coming up to include our, our registrars, our clerk, D P W. Public safety, uh and our resident trooper, uh just to go over uh everything that we need. Um make sure everything is where we need it to be and that, that I and the town have confidence in our registrars to conduct a great election as they always have. On that topic, the referendum uh in regards to our um funding, our paving of our roads. Uh we are likely, I'm looking to put out a flyer to the town, uh an informational flyer. There'll be a cost for two K. About two, I'm sorry, two thousand dollars to, to do that informational flyer. Uh we'll get that out. We have to get it out pretty quickly. Uh we're working on that out of our office, and I say we, Sarah Bath is doing a lot of it. And between uh our D P W director and, and Lisa Hancock, our finance director should have it all ready to go relatively soon. Uh P C C, we're gonna have our first meeting with the new P C C on September nineteenth. Uh we'll work with our, our clerk. I, I believe I will start the meeting and then appoint a chair. Uh it's, it's gone very, very well. And while we're on that topic, the uh scarecrow. Uh contest, Conley gave you an update on, uh Harvest Fest, the planning is in, in full swing. Everything's going great. Um Connecticut Valley Brewing will likely be the, uh one of the, one of the two beer vendors there as uh five churches. Uh could not make it. We have some great food trucks that are gonna be there. Uh. We, we, we have some pretty good surprises coming that I, I, I don't want to mention yet, but there's, there's one really good one. I can't wait. It's gonna be a, a real family uh type of, of. Where you can come and get a family photograph taken. Uh if you want to bring a photographer, you can. Uh but it's going to be an amazing backdrop of. Someone who's really good at building. Metal things in town, uh and behind that will be the actual Hicks, uh Hicks Stern's house. Between the two, and then it'll be, and it's in a perfect area to take a family picture. It'll be up likely a weekly, uh a week in advance, so it won't have to be done that day, but certainly we could do it that day. Um and it's just a positive way to, to bring families here and a positive way to recognize one of our artists here in town. Uh we're looking at doing a couple of other things with it as well, so uh that, that is moving along great. We have a new resident trooper. He is going to be here on one of the next uh two agendas, or I believe. Uh I am very, very happy uh with who we have here. I can tell you, he, he has only been on the state police for two years, but he has ten years experience in the Department of Corrections. What that tells me is he can talk to anybody. And he has that personality, just such a great, easy-to-talk-to uh type of gentleman and, and older, like not like a, you know, somebody you think two years in the job or get this young kid. No, um this, this is an older person with, with a family, uh and so I'm very, very happy to have him. I, I went with him over to meet with Walt. Uh great meeting there, and Chief Laitel uh met with him as well, our public safety director, went to all the schools. Uh so it, it's going uh very well with him, so I, I look for positive things. This is just a nice guy. You're all gonna like him. Um and that's coming from me, so it's, he's a nice guy. That's all.
Are there any questions for the town manager?
More question, but just from the last year, can I ask?
Yeah, sure.
So I finally was able to read the board, the new statute of the two percent and everything, but I don't even think we can have a ordinance. Really, because I.
The year, we do have a policy on.
I don't think we do need to have it with the new, new statute. That, so that's what I just wanted to clarify.
I am unable to clarify that at this point now.
No, I know, but I, I was looking and if you read, it's like, it's. God, I'm not the state statute lawyer or anything, but I think. We might not even be able to have ordinance with the new. Plus they get to decide.
I just, I discussed it with Walt. I discussed it with Lisa Hancock as well, um and then by all accounts, it's, you know, we want an attorney to.
Alright, that's why I finally did the call. We just read another section, so. Alright, um so I just wanted to. Just bring that up and we're together. Clarifying thoughts on it.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just asked for a question on that one. Um I know the last meeting, we talked a bit about, you know, wanting to continue that conversation. Uh do you, Katie, or Brian, um have any ideas about when we might see that topic on another town council agenda that would fall on the chair's shoulders?
I think I, I asked for it to go on it, future agenda, so.
Brian's not at the next meeting, so it's on the October. I, I think the second meeting in October, because with him not being here next week. The first meeting in October is fact.
Okay.
So likely the second meeting in.
Yep, and as I said, um two weeks ago, it's gonna be a multiple meeting thing. It's not a single meeting decision.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. Certainly, there's no rush. Um it's not like there's a million dollars that's, we need to transfer like tomorrow. So you have time to be deliberate about it, but thanks.
Uh I noticed, and I'm sorry if I missed you verbal, the new fire truck has arrived. Ambulance, sorry, thank you. Yes, the new ambulance has arrived.
I have not seen it yet, but I'm told it was, yes.
Okay.
I have no information on it, other than I know it's here.
Okay, great. Well, it's good news to hear.
It'll be a while before it gets into service. There's, there's a lot of uh, you know, radios and such.
Okay, great. It's good to hear there's progress.
Paper trail, yes.
Yes, good to hear there's progress.
There's certification.
Yeah.
And all that, that has to go through a D P H.
Okay.
Well, at least we know it's here, Katie.
Yeah. Fine, yeah, it's been a while now, yeah. Any other questions? Uh we'll move on to uh item eleven on our agenda, which is adoption of minutes. We have the August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes in our packet. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I have a, a question about the minutes.
Sure.
Maybe it's a procedural. Excuse me, procedural thing, I, he backs off of what Colin Jacob mentioned that, it's known in the minutes that, that. Which I talked about, the medic statute was included in the, in the pack, in the packet that we received, which was not. And I don't know if we spoke a footnote in the minutes to indicate that, or if it's just something that is mentioned here that. The council is not, the majority of the council is not on a chance to review those medic statutes at this point.
The statute was specifically included in our packet and referenced in the uh ordinance.
Well, it was referenced in the board of ed meetings, but I don't recall the actual statute itself being in the packet. I got it.
The reference to the statute is in the.
Well, the reference to the statute is in the packet, but not the statute itself, the, the medic statute itself, which, which was discussed. So only, only the fact that the board of ed are talking about. So only only the fact that the Board of Ed are talking about, there's an amended statute and it cited statute number itself, but. There was no statute itself for us to review within the packet. While you talk about you you'd review the statute, but I don't think anywhere else I'd be able to do that. I just don't know if the meds. Need to make a footnote or there's an amendment to say that the statute itself is not included, the amended statute itself is not included.
Is there specific, I'm sorry, I was just wondering if there's a specific page for referencing in the minutes?
I mean, I saw.
This question. Also Shay, and by statute, you're referring specifically to the amended, like the newest version.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, of the the state statute referencing the two percent.
So I pulled up the. From last week, page twenty five, they do have the. Things the older one, because it talks about up to one percent, not the revised one. I think that's what you're getting at, right?
Yes, that's not the statute. That is the ordinance.
Where they were.
Right, which does specifically refer to the statute. Similar to any of our other ordinance, a number of our other ordinance. And standard practice would be to refer to state statute, which is of course publicly available in many locations.
I think it's a under discussion.
I I have no objection to saying that while reference to the statute was provided, the. Direct verbiage of that statute. Was not included in our packet, reference to it was, just like reference to. Any other thing that we refer to. Just in the minutes from tonight.
Okay, so when I put that in under this item, my referencing item number in the previous agenda.
If we're gonna do it, I think we need to be clear that it's. It would, it's publicly available.
Sure.
Okay.
The statutes are publicly available, so we were referring to a publicly available. Document that is available.
Yeah, I spent all weekend on our two four and I reached out to the state rep to find out where to find it, so. I know, but I didn't know it. That's not, I'm sorry. It's just not my thing to do it. And that's how I found out from her that too, Brian, about the ordinance thing too. She doesn't think that we can have an ordinance anymore.
Because this was discussed outside of the motion, are we putting this under the edit of the motion or prior to the motion?
We'll probably include this in the motion. Does that make sense?
I guess I'll make a motion to amend or to approve amendments to approve the minutes with the verbiage that's discussed.
Do you want to read this back? I have reference to the statute was provided, direct verbiage of the statute was not included in the package. This is I run it. Eight point three, this where I noted that the statute was publicly available and a reference was made to a publicly available document.
If you want to clean that up, any.
That's what I said. Second motion.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? I guess I would just add that. The packet did include our. Last week, last meeting's packet included our town ordinance. Which specifically refers to state statute. So we were provided with our town ordinance. As that was exactly what we were discussing. Or that's what the the Board of Ed Chair brought to us. And in that he brought up the change, the Public Act twenty four. Sorry, I've not made the minutes. Public, Public Act twenty four dash forty five, I believe he referenced according to our minutes. Which is again, state law as well as town statute, town ordinances are publicly available. All of this information was provided in our packet, which all members of council had well ahead of the meeting. And certainly could have reached out and asked for additional information.
Alright, well, Katie, since you want to start getting nitpicky, let's get nitpicky. First of all, we weren't well aware of this issue in our packet, because we received an amended packet. Which received the night before or the day before the meeting that we have. All this here full time jobs, so we don't sit around for the rest of the day reading through, which I believe was about a sixty seven page packet. So that's issue number one. Number two, the board that was not only here to discuss the town ordinance, but was here to discuss the impact of state. Metted statute to the town ordinance. So it wasn't purely. Town ordinance itself. And therefore it would have been. Much, it would have been nice to have the state ordinance, the state statute, so that we'd be able to discuss it. More efficient.
Did anyone request the state statute ahead of time? Because I just looked it up myself and it's assumed it's.
I was not asked by anyone for a copy of the state statute ahead of time. I don't know what if that request came into the.
No, why we're arguing over something that is very much available online. That anyone could just Google and look up themselves if they wanted to. We do it with a whole bunch of other things, but it doesn't seem like we can just have a civil conversation in regards to anything that involves Board of Ed. But it's a state statute, state statute, you can look up online. And obviously you have a direct route to the state rep who's advising you on what we should be doing with our town, so she could have provided it for you.
That's where it went. That's where it asked you. I didn't know. I did, I Googled it.
You didn't know that state statutes are available publicly.
I know, but there's a lot in there.
As we're gonna, I'm gonna take a hold on a second. Counselor Butler has the floor at this point.
Alright, that's fine. That's fine.
Sorry, personal.
So just a quick comment, just because I don't understand why we need to amend the minutes. Doesn't probably. Why I'll vote no, I just want to make that clear.
Any further comments before we vote on? The motion, which is to approve the minutes with the. With the statement that was included, right?
Statement that that Lisa read?
Yeah.
Yes, alright, I know.
Okay. We shall do a roll call vote. Counselor Nune?
Obsain.
Yay. Counselor Shay? Counselor Brian? Counselor Yuta check. I'm also a yay, so. That motion fails. Or yay votes are required to pass the motion. At this point, I will table this for our next meeting and we will review minutes at our next meeting. Item twelve is correspondence to council. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Nune?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, sure.
So love the discussion. It all sounded great from everybody, something I definitely. Could. Get caught up on a little bit more. Obviously, we're at kind of a stalemate there with that one. But hopefully that's something that in the future that I could kind of help out with if that's a table discussion, so. Everything sounded good, though. Good debate.
Thank you. We'll move on to item twelve, which is correspondence to council. Counselor Yuta check.
Yes, thank you. So we got, like you mentioned, the last meeting, Katie, about historic district would be, which, you know. To us, I don't think it was so comfortable about the light, so I did get that. I just wanted to mention that I did get that. And we got an email today regarding some road concerns. And then we also got another email regarding. Some sidewalk concerns out front as well, and I apologize because that should have been run to the last one. But I think that came in the same day or the day before and I didn't get it, but I think it was for three or four. I just gave you what one. Who speak up?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item twelve is the chairperson's report.
Katie, sorry.
Yeah.
Correspondence, the correspondence at all, or do you just not discuss?
We enter it in per rules of procedure, counselor Yuta check gives a very topical sub information and it gets entered into the record.
So no discussion about.
I mean, is there something? Do you have a follow up question?
Well, the one you mentioned about the road, the email about the road issue, is there anything that we have on our website or that you can get access to that? Talks about the timing of the pay, timing of the payment of the roads.
All of it, all everything, everything there and more, and we'll respond back to. I forwarded to Director Lappin, who's out. I'm surprised he's pretty good about responding. I didn't, I I spent up that guy's name. I didn't get anything from him at all until I saw that. He sent it to me as well on the side saying, hey, just want to let you know. And so I had already sent it to Scott. He'll have something. To respond, but it's everything's the five year plan, the update, the the in the referendum, you know, a lot of the notes that we put out, the information will come exactly from. What's in there too.
Yeah, I I thought there was something out there and it's kind of a nice thing to have out there, people can actually look at. Maybe it's just a question of like, how do you how do you get to it? Maybe you just.
That's what he's usually pretty responsive to the link at least, you know, and here checking out here's, you know, these responses, but. Said bumpy a few weeks.
Alright, we'll move on to item thirteen then, which is the chairperson's report. I did just want to stress what Tom Andrew Foley said earlier, that there are a couple of opportunities for. Trash related items, including the bulky waste pickup, which is going to be in October. Reservations are required and must be made no later than October first. So for residents who wish to participate in that bulky waste pickup, you do need to make a reservation by October first. And also the free residential electronics recycling event is a another opportunity to properly dispose of. Trash that outdated items that might be in your home. And that does not require a reservation, right? You just go to the high school.
Thank you to the thirteen.
Yes, absolutely. So thank you. I would also. Continue to express my gratitude that we do have an operating budget for this this fiscal year. That operating budget does have impact and I would like at this point to read the official minutes that came from the last Board of Ed meeting. This is from. Comments from Board of Ed members. One of the Board of Ed members commented that budget cuts impact students and families, but mostly staff. The board member thanked the board for everything they did to try to retain as many programs, services and people as they could this year. They thank Dr. Willett for creatively bringing back some items that the members of the Board of Ed could not figure out a way to save, such as the French program. In regards to the French program, they were able to do this because someone left the position and the position was then eliminated. Now a teacher will split their time between T M S, the middle school, and T H S, the high school, and it will not be the same. Additionally, Dr. Willett received a grant to retain Lexia online, but it would be wonderful to be able to get France to add more programs. The responsibility once held by team leaders and curriculum lays on will now fall on administrators. Staff will be serving students to the best of their abilities, but will be doing so with additional burdens. The Board of Ed member respects this and asked residents to find a way to support staff and teachers. A thank you goes a long way. And I would echo that. I would also read the comments of the Board of Ed Chairperson from, again, the minutes of the last Board of Education meeting. Sorry, I'm just opening that up. Mr. Holt. Mr. Holt cited a survey from the C E A, which I believe is the Education Association about the various things that staff will encounter. Many staff are coming in stress and Mr. Hope believes the board can do a better job supporting and uplifting staff. And this is something that I personally applaud Mr. Holt for his efforts in and have offered to help. Not personally, if there's any way that I can help to that. As a parent of a child who is taking French, I am very aware of the limitation. And the impact that that has on my household. So again, happy to have an operational budget. I also understand this operational budget impacts families and students throughout the town. That is it for me. Item fourteen is communications and petitions from council persons. Counselor Mike?
Yeah. So I just want to talk about, I got a couple of questions about. Contaminated wells. So one thing, I was looking back at the meeting minutes that we had from last meeting and there was discussion about a meeting with U S D and D P H. And discussing a timeline. I wanted to just know, and I know could be high level, Brian, but. Was that a productive meeting and was the timeline created?
Timeline in regards to what?
It doesn't specify the minutes. I can't remember exactly what it was.
I believe it was in regards to one sixty eight, right, Katie?
Probably that's what they tend to be asking for timeline on.
Yes, and we're on anything in regards to a timeline with them. We have not missed one and won't miss one.
Yeah.
In regards to that, so.
Okay, that's good to hear. I think, yeah, thinking about this issue in general, contaminated wells and the scale of it and and also the time length that. This problem represents and I think, you know, I really appreciate the the job that. You, Katie, Joe, and all members of the the task force are putting in and that you work Langin and State's doing, but I think. An issue like this would be beneficial if the council could get, you know, some regular, I think, monthly updates, like executive summaries kind of up on like meetings that have been held. And any meetings held with like D D P H, any residents would be really helpful. And then any any key decision points or timelines would be would be really useful. Again, it's not certainly not that I don't trust the people that are working on it. I just think for an issue that is so critical. We need to, this council needs to be looking at it collectively more frequently. Happy to talk more about that offline as to the mechanics of how that works, but I think something like that would be really helpful for us to see what's happening. So anyway, that's my, I guess it's petition, but I'll look into it. Thank you.
I'll just say that I agree with Council Mark's point about the well contamination. I do thank the Rose Hall Task Force and you know, Katie, for all the work that you're doing on that. And I I understand functionally, there's probably. You know, that may, we may have to consult the town attorney for exactly what we can receive publicly, but I do think. Trying to resolve this and for us to keep up, keep informed as much as we can. I think that that makes sense.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Councilman, Councilman sentiments on as well. I think we need to to be a little more active and get. Just aware, not so aware, but keep them apprised as often as we can and that this this process is moving along, it's slower. But I I do think that we need to, we need to understand better the parties involved and what they're held accountable for. Process, because it it is a very slow moving process and I can certainly understand the frustration of the residents. And I think we need to be better. And I think we need to do better.
Counsel Nunez?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to, uh, come out and publicly, uh, announce to everybody who, who may not know, um. So I've been away for a couple of weeks. I'm currently up in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, right now, building a timber frame carriage barn. Uh, so, some, some council members I bumped into and kind of, um. Let know that, you know, that I won't be in person. Um, I really hope to be. In person for the public hearing in a couple of weeks and, um. If anybody wants to reach me in person, uh, or electronically, you know, I am home on the weekends, so I kind of appreciate everyone's patience. And, um, hope to see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. I'll move on to item fifteen, which is public listed participation. Uh, this is on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. If you are here in the room and you're able, we ask you to come up to the table. If you're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. Either way, we'll ask you to state your name and your address for the record, go back and forth. Anyone here?
Dennis Teagan, six eight nine, Holland State Road. I was here a couple of meetings back, uh, dealing with, uh, roads in the capital budget for that. My recollection was, there was another meeting following that where there was more discussion that I wasn't able to make. Um, and I had, I guess, uh, some comments, questions, so if I may just raise those now. If I understand the equation of that, which is roads last fifteen to twenty years. And that dollar amount was bumped from five to seven million, so that means that all roads in town. That need to be done are done for seven million dollars over a fifteen or twenty-year period. Is that correct? I don't know, you're supposed to answer me. I'm kind of raising the question, but that's how that formula would work if I understand it correctly. And if it doesn't strictly, if all roads that need to be done during that timeframe are not done in that five or seven million dollars. It means if we're setting aside the wrong amount of money and we're kicking some can down the road, okay, as I understand it. The other thing, I guess, dealing with the tax abatement process, um. I had the time to quickly look at the statute that's in place right now and, um. I don't know whether there's something outside of this today that exists, that's not written in here. Um, but basically, as I read this, the town council should determine the specific abatement for each project based upon benefit of, to the town. Um, and it gives per section, blah, 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 shall not be more than ten years. Um, so I guess I haven't had the time to actually read that statute. Um, my question really is, what is that formalized process? Is there a risk analysis? Is there a cost benefit analysis? What quantitative? In addition to qualitative assessment is made by the town council in deciding who gets what and for what reason? Um, the reason I ask that is that, going back a few years, uh, the, um. I was gonna say circus, probably not a good word. Uh, the process that went about the development behind Jet, JetBlue, I'm sorry, electric blue. JetBlue's not happy. Um, uh, basically it was giving them, uh, tax relief, I believe, for a number of years. And it didn't seem to me that there was any recognition of the fact that with that project down there, all of the town's costs potentially could skyrocket. Fire, police, I mean, how many stories, you probably need a broken light, et cetera, et cetera, okay? There didn't seem to be any thought process towards any cost to the town by doing this. Um, so at some point and maybe in this process, um. You, you can include in that discussion what, uh, strategic approach, what, uh. Assessment analysis are you using in determining how and why and for what reason? So that's it. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone online who would like to speak? Right, one in the room? No, anybody else? Anyone else online? We'll move to item sixteen, which is in German. Is there a motion for a German?
Salute at seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any objection to a German? Any objection? Any objection to a German? Okay, without objection, we are German. Thank you very much.